...of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners. Today is January 1st, 2025. Time is now 12:00 p.m. I'd like to invite Father Philip Michael Tangora up for our invocation.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord Jesus, we ask you to bless and to sanctify the Board of Commissioners of Sussex County, strengthen them in their work, give them an increase in faith, hope, and love, and all the grace that they need to live virtuous lives. We welcome and bless Allen Henderson as he begins his role on this board, and we bless in a very special way Chris Carney as he returns as the Director of the Board of Commissioners. We ask that their works throughout this year will continue to grow our communities throughout Sussex County, New Jersey, to benefit our schools, especially in the areas of reading and writing and critical thinking. We ask for the blessings upon all their different road projects and other services that they will take upon themselves this year, so that we may truly thrive as a community centered in Christ here in Sussex County. And we ask this of you, Lord Jesus Christ, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Congratulations.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you. If everyone would please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3B of Chapter 231 PL 1975, has been made per authorization of the Board and per notice which was posted and emailed from the Administrative Offices of the County of Sussex, located in the Administrative Center, 1 Spring Street, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald, New Jersey Sunday Herald, The Star Ledger, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, I just ask if everyone could please mute all your electronic devices. Okay, now I'd like to invite Jeff Parrott, County Clerk, up for the determination statement from the November 5th, 2024 election.
Okay, on behalf of the county clerks, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out today, and I'm sure the Commissioners appreciate on the first day of 2025 that everybody made the time to make it here today for this special occasion. With that being said, I'm going to read the statement of determination, the statement of determination of the Board of County Campuses relative to the election held in the County of Sussex in the state of New Jersey for the election of certain officers for the county on the 5th day of November, 2024. The said Board does determine that at the set election, the following officers: Christopher Carney, elected as a county commissioner for a three-year term. Congratulations, Mr. Carney. Secondly, Mr. Allen Henderson was elected county commissioner for a three-year term. Mr. Henderson, congratulations.
Thank you.
Were duly elected to the office and for the term above said forth. I do hereby certify that the foregoing is true, full and correct statement of the determination of the Board of Campusers therein mentioned in witness whereof I have here to set my hand the 21st day of November, 2024. Okay? And it will be also signed by the Chairman of the Election Board, Mr. Mark Kefler. As chairman, the final certification is as follows, by Jeffrey M. Parrott, County Clerk of the County of Sussex, who hereby certify that the foregoing is true, full and correct copy of the statement of determination of Board of County Campusers, relevant to an election held in the county or regional district thereof on herein noted and certain officers, and certificate thereto appended as fully and entirely as the same remains on file at my office. It is signed by Jeffrey M. Parrott, which is me. I congratulate once again the candidates, and again, thank everybody for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Carney, if you could please step forward to be sworn in as a member of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners by County Clerk Jeff Parrott for a three-year term, said term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2027. I can take that to the gym.
Okay, Commissioner Carney, raise your right hand. So far, you're doing very well.
Yes, sir.
We have the oath of allegiance and oath of office, and I'm going to ask you to repeat after me. State of New Jersey County, Sussex, I, Christopher Carney.
I, Christopher Carney.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Bear true faith.
Bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the government.
And to the government.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform.
Perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
County Commissioner.
County Commissioner.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Carney, congratulations.
Thank you.
And this is for a term ending December 31st, 2027. Let's give him a big hand, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, I'd like to ask Mr. Henderson, Allen Henderson, to step up to be sworn in as a member of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners by Vanessa Henderson-Akins for a three-year term, said term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2027. Left hand, right hand, major ready. This is the oath of allegiance and the oath of the office. I, state your name.
I, Allen Henderson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform. And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
County Commissioner.
County Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to do roll call. Commissioner Carney.
Here.
Commissioner DeGroot.
Here.
Commissioner Hayden.
Here.
Commissioner Henderson.
Here.
Commissioner Space.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to ask at this time, is there a nomination for Director for the Board of County Commissioners for 2025?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Chris Carney.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Okay. Do I have a first for a motion to appoint Chris Carney as Director to the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners?
Show move.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot.
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Abstain.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Okay, this time, I'd like to invite Gary Chisano, County Sarrogate, to administer the oath of office for Director of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners.
All right, repeat after me, your oath of office for Director. I state your name.
I, Chris Carney.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And justfully perform, and justly perform.
And I will faithfully and justly perform.
All the duties of the office of.
All the duties of the office of.
Commissioner Director for the County of Sussex.
Commissioner Director of the County of Sussex.
To fill a one-year term.
To fill a one-year term.
Said term to expire December 31st, 2025.
Said term to expire December 31st, 2025.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, at this time, is there a nomination for Deputy Director for the Board of County Commissioners for 2025?
I will nominate Jill Space.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Can I have a motion to appoint Jill Space as Director to the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Carney, roll call vote.
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Abstain.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite Assemblyman Mike Ganemore to administer the oath of office to Jill Space.
Glad it's not the big one.
I'm going to the gym, but I'm not ready for Chris's Bible yet.
Okay, left hand on the Bible, please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Jill Space.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of Commissioner Deputy Director for the County of Sussex.
Of the office of Commissioner Deputy Director of the County of Sussex.
Exactly. To fill a one-year term.
To fill a one-year term.
Said term to expire December 31st, 2025.
Said term to expire December 31st, 2025.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to turn over as Chair of the meeting, Commissioner Director, Chris Carney.
All right, thank you. Number 10 is approval agenda. There's one change in this agenda. It's Item 15L will be removed to vote on separately. Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, abstain, carries. 11, recognition of dignitaries and Commissioner's remarks. I'm going to start off with the dignitaries. So we have Assemblyman Mike Ganemore, County Clerk Jeff Parrott, Sarrogate Gary Chisano, Frankfurt Mayor Dave Silverthorne, Apakon Mayor Marie Galate, Apakon Councilperson Jennifer Johnson, State GOP Committee Man Billy Marata, Vernon Mayor Anthony Rossi, Lafayette Mayor Kevin O'Leary, and I saw Lisa Chamings come in, Stillwater Mayor Lisa Chamings. Is she here?
Yes.
There she is. And Lisa Chamings. I hope we didn't forget anybody. Thank you, guys, for coming. Appreciate that. And we will go to Commissioner's comments. I'll start to my left with Commissioner Hayden.
Oh, I can't hear.
Commissioner's comments. You have no comments?
I can't hear.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Okay, glory to God, happy new year to you all. It is a tremendous blessing to enter my second year as one of your Sussex County Commissioners. Reflecting on 2024, we made meaningful strides in enhancing and promoting our Sussex County's farmland preservation program. Among our accomplishments were the Farmland Preservation Revitalization Tour, which featured 13 stops across the county, the realignment of resources within our planning department for our preservation program, the submission of two farmland preservation applications, and the launch of our update tour 2008 Farmland Preservation Plan. Looking ahead to 2025, I'm eager to build on this progress. A key development this year will be the finalization of the state's new farmland appraisal formula, set to take effect this spring. With the hope of updated and improved appraisal values from the new formula, I anticipate a significant increase in preservation applications. My goal for us is to manage this demand effectively and aim for four preservation applications annually. Additionally, we plan to complete the farmland preservation plan update, providing a clear and actionable roadmap to strengthen this vital program. However, the top priority for 2025 will be to authorize a public referendum to appear on the November 4th, 2025 general election ballot to seek voter approval to continue the Sussex County Farmland Preservation Recreation and Open Space Trust Fund for an additional 10-year time period. To meet the August deadline for the general election inclusion, I will begin advocating for this measure immediately, engaging with all of municipalities. This referendum has previously received unanimous backing from the Commissioner Board to be placed on the ballot in both 2005 and 2015. I firmly believe in the principles of democracy and in trusting the power to the people to make this important decision. I have full confidence that the people of Sussex County will once again make their voices heard. Another exciting initiative in 2025 is the launch of our county seed library through the Division of Senior Services. After completing Phase 1 in 2024, organizing and securing a strong seed supply, we will roll out Phase 2 early this year, allowing residents to order and pick up seeds. Later in the year, Phase 3 will feature educational workshops on seed starting, healthy gardening practices, and seed saving. Phase 4 will conclude the year with a program survey assisting plant health, production, retention, and yield. Education remains a cornerstone of my mission in 2025. I'm committed to supporting Sussex County Community College and the Technical School, both of which are essential to expanding opportunities for our residents. In 2024, we achieved a significant milestone by launching an agricultural internship program in partnership with Hudson Farms and our community college during this past fall semester. Our first student gained hands-on experience in Hudson Farms Day of the Year greenhouse. Interest is already building for this upcoming spring semester, signaling a bright future for the program as we expand it further in 2025. As I continue this journey, I'm inspired by the dedicated team of Commissioners with whom I serve. Together, we will address the challenges facing our county, seize opportunities for growth, and work tirelessly to ensure the prosperity and well-being of Sussex County. Thank you for your trust and your support. Thank you for coming out today. Magiabla Sussex County and each and every one of you. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Commissioner. Go to my right, our newest Commissioner, Commissioner Henderson.
First of all, I'd like to say a heartfelt thanks to my wife and my family for standing by me through this election process. It certainly is not an easy one. I'd also like to thank Sussex County residents for the opportunity to serve our community and for your trust in me to work for every citizen of Sussex County regardless of their political affiliation. For those of you who have been with me from the beginning, I thank you for your encouragement and support, for your guidance and your wisdom. I've had the advantage and privilege of working in Sussex County for many years, serving in various capacities. I believe I have seen the best and the worst, the strengths and the weaknesses in our community. I believe as Commissioners, we can continue to work to improve the quality of our community. Let's ask the hard questions. Let's look for equitable solutions. I ran my campaign on three elements that I value and practice in my professional career and as a private citizen. They are transparency, accountability, and responsibility. Let's put those qualities to work. There is no room in government for favoritism or paybacks resulting in appointments due to obligations. Let's look for the best talents and resources that will best serve our residents. I'm looking forward to working with my fellow Commissioners to solve problems head-on and continue to move Sussex County forward with integrity, honesty, and transparency. I am ready to work for you. I'm ready to work for Sussex County. And again, I thank you for your trust and your support in me. Thank you.
Deputy Director Space?
Thank you. First of all, I'm very happy to be here today. I almost didn't make it. My husband is in Jacoby Hospital in New York City with a rattlesnake bite, but he is recovering after 14 vials of antivenom, and he will be home hopefully today. I'm leaving to go to the Bronx right after this. I want to thank Mike Ganemore for stepping in and swearing in while Parker wasn't going to do that, and Christina Marcus for stepping in for Parker. I asked Christina because she's so good to all of us on the Board, along with Ron Tappin. So my son is picking up the bulk of the zoo right now because Parker is out of commission. I would first like to thank my fellow Commissioners for entrusting me with the responsibility of being the Deputy Director of the 2025 Board. Thank you to my family for your never-ending support. Congratulations to Director Carney. I'm being sworn in today and beginning your next term. Your dedication to the county is remarkable. Congratulations to our new Commissioner, Allen Henderson. I look forward to working with you. Your years of experience in Lafayette will certainly be an asset to the county. Thank you to our constitutional officers, who I am proud to work with on a daily basis, and I thank them for all they do for our county. I also want to thank our county workforce for their commitment to Sussex County. 2024 was an honor for me to serve as Director of the Board. We accomplished many great things. I'm proud of the budget we quickly passed below a .90 increase by being fiscally conservative. This Board was able to be fiscally responsible all while maintaining our infrastructure and not only continuing, but also increasing services to our taxpayers. We continued collaborations with District 24 and all of our county municipalities, always keeping the taxpayers in mind. We also worked hard with our local partners, especially Sussex County Technical School, as well as Sussex County Community College, to help meet the needs of our residents. As I enter my fourth calendar year on the Board, I'm committed to doing everything possible to keep Sussex County moving forward during challenging economic times. Sussex County is our home, and I've said before, I'm honored to have this opportunity to serve as Commissioner to make Sussex County, make sure Sussex County remains a beautiful place to live and work. And I also want to invite everyone back for a reception at O'Reilly's that is sponsored by Senator Parker Space, Assemblywoman Dawn Fantasia, Assemblyman Mike Ganemore, County Clerk Jeff Parrott, Sarrogate Gary Chisano, Sheriff Mike Strata, and Commissioner Director Chris Carney, myself, and Commissioners Jack DeGroot and Allen Henderson. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you again. Thanks, everybody, again, for being here today. Thanks to Gary and Jeff for swearing in. I appreciate that. Congratulations, Allen. It's been a long road. Finally here, finally get to call you Commissioner after a long time. So, thank you again. It's been three years, 11 months since I got sworn in, and things have changed dramatically. The faces of this Board have definitely changed year after year. I think the longest people I've served would be Commissioner Hayden and Commissioner Space. Some good, some bad, you know? You kind of, people go to different places. Dawn Fantasia is now in the Assembly, and some resigned and some moved on, but, you know, we're heading in the right direction. We've done a lot of good things here in the last three years and 11 months that I've been here. Getting rid of some buildings, buying some new buildings, working on contracts for our underpaid employees that we have throughout the county, dealing with our constitutional officers as they do a great job, and working in concert with them year after year is what we like to do, and we seem to do a very good job at that. Our infrastructure's top-notch. Our planning and engineering is very good. Our administration is second to none. I say this all the time. Our employees at the county make Sussex County. You know, we're here to set policy and budget. That's what we do, and they're here to run the county, and they do a really good job. And I'm proud to be a part of it, and I'm proud to be a Director. I do appreciate the people who did vote for me and to put me in this spot. Although I am only one vote, as everybody else is here too. I hope everybody understands that. You know, I vote just like Jack and Jill and Bill and Allen now, so it is one vote. I run the meeting. That's really about it. I get to sign a bunch of paperwork for POs. That's about the only thing you get as a Director. So, looking ahead, we're going to plan on to continue on our mayor's lunches for those mayors that are here. We kind of spearhead things off each other and bounce things off each other to do some more shared services, so we're going to continue doing that. And we're going to continue having our department head meetings every month. That way, we have no questions. There's, everybody's on page, lots of transparency going on, so we're going to keep doing that. Again, I'm just real proud to be a part of Sussex as everybody else is here and looking forward to continue moving on. My door is always open for anybody here. I think most people who are here that know me know that. Email me, call me, whatever. I will always get back to you. If you've got any problems, you know, come and see me. That's all I have. Thank you again for all coming. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, next. 13, public sessions from the floor. This public session is for questions or comments pertaining to agenda items only. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. Please state your name, municipality, and agenda topic. Motion to open the floor for public comment.
Second.
Second?
Solemnly.
You agree with it? Commissioner DeGroot moves. Commissioner Hayden seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, abstain, carries. The floor is open for any public comments, agenda items only. All right, seeing none. Motion to close the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Space, Commissioner DeGroot, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, abstain, carries. All right, number 14, approval of the consent agenda. All right, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the consent agenda consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of said resolutions is and will further the public interest. If any Commissioner would like to remove an item to be considered separately, please do now. All right, motion to approve the consent agenda, Resolutions A through P.
So moved.
Mr. Space?
Second.
Mr. Henderson, seconds. Roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
All right, 15 is appointments. I get a motion to adopt appointments A through K.
So moved.
Commissioner Space?
Second.
Commissioner DeGroot, seconds. Any discussion?
Yeah, like, move now?
We move now. 15L?
That's already been done.
Just move. Not capable, just move. It's a breakout separate.
Can't bring it out.
Yep. Are we good for A through K? Okay, roll call.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Abstain.
All right, pass. So you have this down here.
Item L.
It's not, all right. So we're going to break out Item L. This, I'll just read it for you. It's appointment of Earl Schick as a member of the Sussex County Community College Board of Trustees. Said term to begin immediately and expire October 31st, 2028. Motion to adopt appointment L.
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves.
Second.
Commissioner DeGroot, seconds. Discussion?
I would like to discuss this. As a new person on the Board, I had no idea of how this process works as far as an appointment to the County Board. I did my due diligence and looked into this and spoke to three past Chairs of the Sussex County Community Search Committee. I can tell you, there are two applicants for this position. I did speak at 11 o'clock this morning to the current Sussex County College Chair, Mr. John Wesley, who informed me that the college has never seen the applications of the two individuals that put in a resume to sit on the County College Board. I find this incredible, to be sitting here voting on a resolution that clearly reads, and you can see it in your minutes, clearly reads that the search committee has approved this individual to sit on the Sussex County College Board. I will sit here and tell you, that is not the case. I will sit here and tell you, that is not the case. I'd asked Mr. Wesley to be here, said he thought he could make it. He thought the meeting was actually at 6:00 PM tonight. He confirmed with me, no one, as a search committee, has met or interviewed either of the candidates that are applying for this position. And I will make that motion to table this for multiple reasons, which I just stated, and also, if you look at New Jersey's statute, Title 18A Education, Section 18A 64A requires that there are five people that sit on a search committee for a county college. We currently have three people that have not met. And I will make the motion to table this for further discussion at another meeting.
Any other discussion?
So, just to get to your point, I'm just gonna have Ron explain to you at least, I don't know what, which other one you're talking about besides Earl, but if he, if Ron, you just want to chime in and just explain why Earl?
I can't hear.
I'm sorry. Just give me a second. Just explain to Commissioner Henderson just why Earl wouldn't go through that search committee? And then maybe that might clear it up, and then from there, if you want to keep your motion, absolutely sure, then that's fine too. I just want you to understand.
The search committee is put together to interview people of candidates that want to be part of the trustee systems, and they ultimately give that to me, and I give that to the Board for, for the approval.
Correct, I understand.
Traditionally, like we did with Commissioner Yardley, he's a known entity. We've interviewed him, we've worked with him for years, we know. The search committee, at that point, there's very little they could ask any different than we didn't already know about the candidate, so it's a point across the Board, and the commissioners have the, the decision to go or not. Same thing with the previous Commissioner Schrick. He's a known entity, we've worked with him for over a year. We know his background, we know what he's done, we know his performance as a Commissioner. That recommendation then comes to the Board for, for the approval. And that's, that's typically what we've done.
Sir, I appreciate your opinion entirely, but when you read this statute, it clearly does not give this Board the authority to move forward without the search committee recommending that. I mean, it clearly states this here in the statute, and I will make that motion again to table this, to have County Council look in how this committee has the authority to move forward with an appointment, when it clearly states it comes from a search committee. And I'll even go one step further in that. The resumes of the two individuals were sent to the search committee chair yesterday. I don't know how they had time to meet, how they had time to even look at the applications for either candidate. This has nothing to do with the candidates. It has to do with what's transparent and what's right for Sussex County.
So, just one more thing to add, and we're just gonna move on, because we're not gonna